Okay, welcome everyone. I'm going to call the January 11th, 2021 Select Board Meeting to order. And ask the clerk to please call who's present.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Present.
Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Myself, Ms. Bates, present.
And the full Select Board is here. And I see we have a number of presenters who have also arrived. So that's terrific. I'll read the consent agenda. Minutes to approve for December 14th, 2020. December 14th, 2020, executive session number one not to be released. December 14th, 2020, executive session number two not to be released. And town accountant warrants for January 7th, 2021.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous in the chair, so declares. The town manager's report.
Good evening, everyone. You have the, just looking at the printed report. I think that the top thing I really want to clear, clarify for the board and for folks at home is we've received questions about vaccinations from non, for non-first responders. And I just, you know, and I think you'll have been, you know, some of our departments have been getting a lot of phone calls. And we've sent out news and notices and we're trying to get the word out to the greatest extent possible. But the town itself does not, you know, purchase or, you know, assign doses of vaccine, nor do we choose the order in which people are vaccinated. That's all coming from the Department Public, the state's Department of Public Health. And so, you know, we've been asked, can you consider, you know, me in this situation, a first responder or something like that? And it's really, it's not up to us. We're following the DPH guidelines and they're the ones that distribute the vaccine for specific purposes. And so even though we all share a desire to get everyone as vaccinated as soon as possible, and we are building structures to see to it that when DPH tells us we can, you know, vaccinate the next round, the next phase, we'll be ready to go. We still can't, you know, get people, we can't take people out of turn. Otherwise, I think we would risk our standing as a vaccine location. And we certainly don't want to do that. That would be, you know, against our interests in terms of getting everybody vaccinated as soon as possible. So I just want to be clear to folks, it's not that we don't care, don't want to get everybody vaccinated. There's a playbook we're following and I think DPH is already showing that they intend to be pretty rigorous in how they enforce their structures. So just please bear with us and be patient. Terry?
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. I was reading an article today that there are some other vaccination centers that were not following the protocol. So we don't want to get into that. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, there may be some, but Chief Judge and Susan Rask and I all agree that it's rough for right now until we know otherwise. And the other thing, the next obvious question people would have is, well, when is the vaccine going to be available? Two phases, one B, one C, two, you know, and so on. And the answer is we don't know. We haven't been told. The state hasn't told us. Like everything during COVID-19, this is all moving very, very quickly. And if we may find out on a Friday that starting Monday, we can start doing vaccinations if, you know, which is how some of this has unfolded. So like I said, just be patient. You know, as soon as we know more about the vaccine schedule, we'll get that information as broadly as possible. But like I said, just, you know, please be patient, bear with us, and understand that it's not, it's not our decision-making that's driving the schedule.
Right, thank you. Thank you.
So just a couple of other quick items in there. Just, you know, the road maintenance, the roads program update for folks from CPW as well as winter maintenance, kind of a snapshot of December so far. And also they're doing their annual renovations of Doug Whitefield. We do have a, one of our public safety dispatches has entered the police academy, which is a good thing. It's nice to be able to have people kind of come up, if you will, in our organization in other positions and hopefully become officers here in Concord and continue to serve the community. And then in your packet, I included an executive summary of a draft executive summary of a feasibility study for establishing a regional dispatch center with Acton and Concord. We will bring that to the board at a future meeting, I think probably relatively soon to have a broader discussion on that. We're still, there are still some aspects to the feasibility study that we're kind of going back and forth on between Acton and Concord and the consultant. But I think if you look, if you glanced at it, you see that based on really primarily reimbursement rates for regional dispatch centers from the state, it's a favorable proposition generally for the town. Chief Judge and Chief O'Connor are very supportive of, you know, working on this effort with the town of Acton. And I'm not sure if I've mentioned this before, but I have previously been the Planning Committee Chair and then the Chair of the Board of Directors of a regional dispatch center between Chickapi and Long Meadow. So I just, I happen to have a lot of firsthand experience with establishing what they call a REC, a Regional Emergency Communication Center. And so I've seen firsthand the benefits of it as well as some of the challenges. And so I think we'll, the people that are involved in this can, I think, come up with something that could work really well for both communities, or at least something that'll be a good discussion point. Matt?
I just would like to see the executive summary, in fact, address challenges and risks. Right now, it's just pure, you know, advantages.
Yeah, I think, so one of the things that we've discussed a lot is because Acton and Concord are so similar in size and call volume and really in just, you know, the types of communities we are, there's not a lot of, I say not a lot of risk. There aren't a lot of, you know, big differences to be worked out just because there's so many things are so similar. But I agree with you. I think that that's a good, as this discussion unfolds, we should, we will be, we will talk about that in greater detail. And certainly Chief Judge and Chief O'Connor can give you their views firsthand on what they believe to be the advantages and disadvantages of it.
Yes, I'm really excited to see this. I'm a big fan of regional centers. And I agree with Matt. I think in another town I worked in, one of the challenges was that the staff was afraid to change and move to another place and kept somewhere. So I see here so far, it doesn't look like, looks like we have a lot of support from our chiefs and our staff. That's great. One of the other challenges that I'd like to see addressed when we do go forward is I think the biggest problem might be the rotary. There's so much congestion there. How are we going to deal with that? So I know we're not discussing it tonight, but I'd like to see that addressed. And then I just had one question about the grant funding in this executive summary. It says the total grant funding is 701,000. The REC grant, I guess, is 561,000. And there's another thing called support. That's 140, what's the support?
So it's the support incentive grant that the state 911 department provides annually to police departments. And we get some now, Acton gets some as well, and that 140 is the combined amounts. So in a combined center, the support incentive grant funds would go to the center instead of to the individual departments.
Okay.
And I'll tell you that one of the big things with regional dispatch is state 911 has for a number of years been incentivizing communities to get together to foreign regions. In fact, I think Carrie LaFleur is here, she was involved in one in past life as well. And they will, they will give incentives or grants for capital improvements for regional centers, but not for individual centers. So major, you know, communications equipment or tower or those types of upgrades, communities that aren't in regional centers will be on their own. Whereas if you're in a regional dispatch center, you can take advantage of the state incentives. And the other thing I'll mention is the state incentives are surcharges on cell phones. So it's not like subject to the whims of the annual appropriation of the legislature. It's a dedicated funding stream.
Jane?
I had two questions to that. I'll start with the one that was inspired by that last comment, which is how does a regional dispatch center handle gaps in coverage? Which, you know, I'm sure Acton has, I know we have, first off. And then is there a way, going down this path, also I noticed the word of efficiencies, but is there really a way embedded that we can, or could we embed something that would capture and incentivize emissions efficiencies across the board? Because, well, that might not be an obvious. I suspect that there's a way of at least documenting a benefit from the standpoint of how vehicles are being dispatched and how many miles they're traveling.
I haven't, we haven't, we're not at that stage yet in terms of the study of this. The other thing is, you know, the basic premise of this, and like I said, you know, the town, it was Long Meadow and the city of Chickapi. And for all the, for all the things, kind of the differences in policing and differences in dispatching, if those, if those two communities were able to kind of sort through all of it and sort through all of the technological challenges, any two communities of Massachusetts can work it out, I can assure you of that. It's peeling an onion, really. And like I said, we'll get into a lot more detail as we go. But you basically identify, you know, where are the gaps? What equipment is needed? How much does that cost? Who needs upgrades? Who needs new radios? It's, this is all kind of the next steps in what we're doing. But, you know, you'll have to take my word for it a little bit, that there are solutions to all these questions. Because like I said, there's just, the biggest reason why there aren't more regional dispatch centers oftentimes is the chiefs aren't really supportive of it because they want to maintain control of their districts. Or there's just a different style of dispatch. Or you'll have officers, police officers doing dispatch versus civilian people, you know, civilian dispatchers. And in this case, the town managers and chiefs all support the idea, now subject to working out some of these details, but we're all, we all support the idea. The dispatchers are actually, they're all civilian dispatchers. They're all represented by the same labor organization. So that kind of streamlines things as well. And so there are a lot of challenges that other communities have when they're forming these recs that we don't have. And, you know, I think the simplest way to think about this is you can get a higher, you get higher capacity for service in a regional center for the same money. I think as the executive summary shows, and as I know from firsthand experience, the communities can save some money, but that's not, the reason to do it is to get a higher, I'd say higher level, because when you call, when you get a Concord dispatcher, you get a very high level of service. But in terms of larger scale events or like large call volume events, the ability to manage all of that is increased in a regional center. So, you know, like I said, I think that there's a lot of positives to this. We will, you know, have a more detailed conversation in a future meeting, but I want to let the board know that this is something that's kind of on the radar. And we'll be picking up some speed as we look at the next round of grant funding from the state to take this from feasibility study to the next round of planning. But I'm, to be honest, I'm excited about it because I do think it is something that can serve both communities very, very well. And then the last thing I had is, you know, I included my town manager's budget message. I went to department heads and as I noted in last week's town manager's report, we're taking a pretty conservative approach. As you can see, we're looking at, you know, fund non-discretionary costs, including wages at actual levels, and then level funds discretionary funding to the FY21 level. And so we'll go through and if departments need some, believe they need something more, they can submit a supplemental request that can be evaluated, kind of as a freestanding request. But we're, like I said, that's a pretty conservative approach, but we think it's what we need to do for FY22 and hope that FY23, we can be back to, I say normal, but be, you know, go back to finding ways where we can always, you know, expand our service offerings to the community.
Okay.
So the other thing I want to mention is that we just found out, I think, either late Friday or over the weekend, that our town caucus legislation was not enacted, along with a lot of the other home, along with the other home rule petitions. There was a lot of activity and I think we were all optimistic that there seemed to be a commitment at the legislative level, even at the governor's level, that they would get done. But I think gridlock, if you will, or just not gridlock, that's, I think the legislature was just overwhelmed with the number of things they had to accomplish at the end of the session and a number of home rule petitions from communities across the Commonwealth just didn't get over the finish line. So we are talking to our representatives, our delegations and their staffs about what do we need to do next to either get them refiled. But in the case of the town caucus, if it can't get done before, say, January 22nd, you know, let us know so we can plan for a caucus that meets the guidelines.
All right, any other comments or questions for the town manager, Susan?
Yes. Steve, in that comment you made about the legislation, is that also applied to our affordable housing trust and the legislation we filed for about surcharges for building permits and real estate?
It applies to all of them. Unfortunately, the liquor license, one that it had a hearing that we felt really good about, it applies to all of them.
Okay, thank you.
There were five in total and none of them were able to make it.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, we'll move on to the chair's remarks. I just want to make a brief statement and then a couple of quick announcements. You know, as all of you know, the events in our nation's capital this past week have greatly disturbed, have been greatly disturbing and have added to the growing anxiety and stress that many of our citizens are already feeling due to the prolonged trajectory of COVID-19 pandemic. We're fortunate in Concord to have an engaged public in the public process with a commitment to civil discourse and debate. And I ask that each of us continue to be sensitive to the stressful climate in which we are all operating and give some space to each other as we try to productively carry on with enabling effective governance and meeting the daily expectations of our citizens for municipal services. I'll move on to two brief announcements and remind everyone that the town election is scheduled for March 25th. Clearly, we're going to hear more about how the caucus will be executed. It may well be outside in a parking lot if we're unable to get any sooner legislation enacted. And I also, related to the town election, the League of Women Voters has announced a candidate's forum that will be held on March 7th at 3:00 PM to be recorded for the public viewing in preparation for the town election. Secondly, there will be no Select Board meeting on Monday, January 18th in observance of Martin Luther King Day. So I see that we have a public, Jane?
I just wanted to thank you for acknowledging, Linda, on behalf of all of us, I suspect how traumatic the events of this past week have been for so many. And the fact that each person will deal with that in their own way. So thank you.
And I think we already, thank you, Jane, for that comment. And we also have citizens who are particularly, continue to be, not only have COVID fatigue, but are very, very concerned about when and how they will get the vaccination. So there's just cumulative stress that everyone's dealing with and we just need to be patient with each other. So I see that we have a public hearing to consider.
Linda, could I make a comment, please?
I'm sorry, Susan, go ahead.
That's okay. I echo what Jane said and also that in thinking about, especially in the past week, it seems to me that the social fabric has really suffered from, not only from COVID and then this additional trauma, but the ability for us to develop relationships with each other is very different now because we can't actually be in each other's company. So I think that refers to our, like, professional relationships with each other and town staff or any worker who's working now in an isolated situation. So hope it ends soon. That's, it was just a comment, though. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments. Okay, I see that we have a public hearing scheduled to consider the application for a new on-premises Section 12 Wine and Milk Beverages Annual License by RK Wing Corporation doing business as Rosini's Pizzeria and Restaurant located at 206 Fitzgerald Turnpike. Do I hear motion to open the public hearing? You're in mute, Susan.
Move to open the public hearing.
Is there a second? So I hear, okay, unmute, very good. Okay, Jane, and so will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous. Public hearing is now open. So we have received all the materials in preparation for this application. I see that there is representatives for this application in the public with us today. But first, I would ask if there are any comments from the Select Board? Okay, if not, I'll turn then to the applicants. Mr. Boris, did you want to represent your application today and say a little bit about it?
Yes. Hi, everyone. My name is Raphael. I am the owner of RK Wing, doing business as Rosini's Pizzeria. I started working with Rosini's since 2004. And a couple of years ago, I bought Rosini's and now I am applying for a liquor license.
Jeremy, is all the paperwork in order?
Yes, the application is complete.
Okay. So comments from the Select Board?
Well, I guess, you know, the chief of police has recommended against approving this liquor license application. And I guess I would be curious whether the applicant has any comments, you know, regarding how, what has changed or why we should reconsider in the face of that recommendation.
Well, I have Lisilia as, she's the manager here and she is a citizenship as well. I'm not a citizen. I am a permanent resident and I don't know why we couldn't, we couldn't have it.
I guess there had been some irregularities with the renewal of your license and then the selling of alcohol in the face of having had discussions about that license having lapsed, at least as far as my understanding of the application. And so I guess there would be some question about your, you know, restaurant's ability to manage alcohol sales, you know, especially with not a.
So Mr. Borges, if I may, did you have, did you have a period of time where you sold some liquor without a license in force?
Yeah, I think there was a period of, we sent, we submitted the application in 2018 to be renewed for 2019, or 2019 for 2020. However, I sent the application along with a payment for, well, with a check, the payment and everything. Everything went through. They deposited the check, the check cleared. I didn't receive anything from the town saying that my license wasn't approved or anything. And we didn't know at that time. So we kept selling alcohol for like three, it was like.
Just for first month?
It was like for the first month of January 2020, I think for the first week until we get notified by the police officer. And then we completely stopped selling alcohol. We did, because we did not know that wasn't renewed by that time. By that time, the liquor license was under Gilbert Almeida, who was the previous owner. And we were trying to transfer the liquor license. And in fact, that I am not a citizenship, I couldn't do it. And now Lisilia, she's been working with Rosini's for 11 and a half years. And now she just became a citizenship, six months ago?
Yeah, no, three months.
She just became a citizenship like three months ago. And she's been with Rosini's for like 10 years already. And that's why we applied again.
So congratulations on receiving your citizenship. Okay, I see a question, Jane?
I would ask Raphael and your, and I apologize, I don't have the other, the lady's name in front of me, so I don't have it off the tip of my tongue.
Lisilia, I believe?
Lisilia.
Yeah. Okay. Do you have any way of assuring the Select Board that your paperwork and your understanding of the regulatory licensing process is different now so that if you submitted and went through the process on a regular basis with, once an alcohol license was granted, that this problem wouldn't, you know, wouldn't recur?
Well, I'm here pretty much like six, seven days a week working, same as Lisilia. Yeah, it wouldn't happen again, as I said, as I mentioned to you. I submit the application on December 19th with, along with the check, all the procedures. And I saw on my bank account, the check went through and I thought it was fine because the check cleared. And then I discovered in January that it wasn't, we completely stopped selling, you know, alcohol by that time. Yeah, pretty much is what I have to say.
Any other, Susan, I see.
Yeah, I just had a clarifying question. So after you discovered in January of 2020 that the license didn't go through, so you didn't, weren't able to sell alcohol for the rest of the year? Is that correct?
That's correct. Until now, we are not selling any alcohol whatsoever. We moved everything out. I even showed to the police officer who came over that, you know, we completely took out, all out. And until now, we are not selling. We are just, we are trying to get prepared for the, you know, after everyone gets vaccinated, we hope everything's going to be busy again, restaurants, you know, because we are suffering, you know?
We hope you do too.
We are just trying, you know, right now, we are not even like having like people come into the dining room, where I have some confidence that after like April, you know, they will start to coming back like, like never before, like going out, you know, a lot of people. So I hope, that's why we, you know.
So your application is for 2021 that we're considering?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Carrie?
So to follow up, so Lisilia, you are a citizen now. And I think I read that the ABCC was recommending that you apply for a transfer of the liquor license from that previous owner, whose name I've forgotten. Have you applied for this transfer?
No, this is, as I spoke with Jeremy, the best way was like applying for a new liquor license instead of transferring. Even, even Mr. Almeida, who was the previous owner, he just passed away six months ago, seven months ago. So I think that wouldn't be able to even transfer that license as he's not around, around us no more.
And just to follow up on that, this is a new license application. There is no license to transfer from. This is a new license application.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Well, the chief is not here today, but he has provided a recommendation, I think generally I think generally, we have taken these recommendations very seriously. I, I, listening to you, I'm certainly sympathetic to the business climate right now at this time. However, I think it's important that the board, select board is, has assurance that the applicant here today can meet all the standards and protocol that are required for following through with a liquor license. And I think that is probably going to require working closely with the town manager's office and, and the police department in sort of clarifying and working through what that, those standards and protocol are. That's just one, that's where I think we are. Any other comments, select board members? Matt?
Yeah, I saw that while the chief is not on the call, that Chris Carmody is. And he had given a statement, you know, that was in here. And I guess I was just confused based upon the applicant's statements, how it was apparently that, you know, an application was made in a timely fashion, they get checked, cashed and so forth, and yet was not enforced for some reason? I'm trying to understand that apparent inconsistency.
So are you asking neither Chris or Jeremy to respond?
Actually, because Chris, I think, had given a statement as to the discussions they had at the time about the application.
Yeah, I think-
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, sure. Select board members, how are you? I, yeah, I don't want to, I don't, you know, I think the, the police department did an investigation, issued their memo, so I don't really have anything to say, you know, to that, except that, I think, Rosini's had submitted an earlier application and there was a little bit of a gap when the previous select board administrator left. The application was, you know, for lack of a better word, it was kind of abandoned. And so when I started, we picked it back up to take a look at-
So there was an administrative issue potentially here, is what I'm trying to understand?
Part, yeah, partially, maybe partially related to that departure of the earlier select board administrator.
Okay, just something that's helpful.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments? Okay, Terry?
Well, I guess I want to ask Chris and Stephen, since the chief's not here, I think Linda made a good point. Is the town manager's office comfortable now that the protocols and procedures are, are in order for Rosini's and they understand it and they will follow it? Or do you think that we need to consult again with the chief?
I did speak with the chief today and his, his recommendation remains the same. I think that, you know, and, you know, with, you know, out of respect for the, for the effort that, that the proprietors are putting into trying to keep the restaurant afloat, and we want to be supportive of that. I think if you read through the information in the packet, it was clear that the license expired and alcohol should not be sold, and it was sold nevertheless. And I think that there needs to be a track record of compliance and willingness to, you know, do what it takes to not only get, not only receive, but also retain a liquor license. And I think that some, some more work needs to be done there, but I, I don't think that it means that they can't, that it can be, you know, no forever. It just is, I just think some more work needs to be done so we can feel, so I think the chief could feel more comfortable recommending issuance of liquor license.
Jane?
I just wanted to double check, I mean, the liquor license, if we determine that we're not comfortable voting in favor of granting this liquor license now, how long would it, would it be until the, the new owner could reapply? I mean, in part, I'm thinking about the fact that right now, as was stated by Raphael, he's applying so that they're fully ready when things open up. So there, there is a timeframe perhaps, that, that won't put Rosini's at a disadvantage.
I, I don't know if there's an ABCC timeline, which would be, I think, the only structured timeline. We can certainly take a look at, you know, what would be the next go at it, if you will, especially since it is a new liquor license application.
Right.
And, and we're happy to do that. You know, we want people to be able to, to do business, but we want to make sure it's, there's a lot, there's a lot of responsibility that comes with liquor licenses, the board well knows. And we want to make sure that we can, that, that level of responsibility is, is on solid footing.
So what are the additional steps that the owner could take to increase that level of confidence, given that they're, they don't have a license now? So there's nothing that they could do in terms of the operation of their business in running, running a liquor license to show that in the meantime? So what, what is it that they could do?
So I, I think it's, there's a process that goes along with this applica, that goes along with the application and complying with ABCC and local rules. And, you know, I don't know how, Jeremy or Chris, I don't, you have a more detailed answer. I don't really know if there's anything specific other than approach. And so, you know, if you'd like to continue this or take a vote tonight, and then we can get you a more detailed answer, and we can certainly work with Rosini's and get on a pathway for, you know, possible approval in the future, you know, we're happy to do that.
Any further comments from the select board? Jane, Susan?
I just have a quick question, I guess for Stephen or for Jeremy. Is the process that the applicant needs to get ABCC approval prior to it being approved by the town?
No, so what, what usually happens, or what does happen, is the select board takes a vote, and if the application is approved, then we send it to the ABCC and they put their final approval on it.
I see, thank you.
And Jeremy or Christopher, either one of you aware of the timeline that was just being, some clarification on the timeline for reapplying?
Off the top of my head, I'm not aware. And I don't think that there is some sort of set amount of time the applicant would need to wait. I would have to double check on that, I can communicate with Raphael. But I'm not aware of any off the top of my head.
Okay.
That's my understanding too.
Okay, thank you. I see we have, if, if there are no other comments from the select board, I'm going to open it up to the public, for public comment. Tanya? If you'll state your name and address, please.
Tanya Gale, 62 Prescott Road, thanks for taking public comment. I am thinking that, I, I have great respect for our police chief's opinions and judgments. However, in the past, there have been cases where he has objected to a restaurant license and with lawyers and everything, people have gotten around it and they have like, just passed ownership to somebody else. In this case, it seems like it's clearly a new ownership and it would be hard for them to prove that they are making efforts to be responsible liquor license holders without holding your liquor license, as Matt alluded to. So, so I just wanted to bring that into the discussion, that in the past, there have been cases where second chances have been given to people. And in this case, if it's new ownership and the restaurant would suffer a lot from the loss of this license, just, just to take that into consideration, I would not, I would not urge one way or the other, but these are the thoughts that come to me as I listen, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Okay, if not. Do I hear any other comments from the board? All right. As I, yes, Stephen?
So I just, I, I want to just be clear that I think, no one's saying there, there can't be a second chance. And I think that what we just said is, we, we want to work with Rosini's to make sure that we can get to that place. And I, you know, but there are, there were things identified in the process that we had concerns with, and we just need to work those out. But certainly, I agree that, that it shouldn't be like a, a lifetime ban. I think we want to make sure that everyone is, you know, doing, fulfilling their responsibilities is really the only reason why I think the chief is recommending denial at this point. But that's not, that, that, I think that that's, that's not the end of it. We need to work with them and move forward.
Yeah, I guess I'm still unclear what that work is.
Just making sure that, that all parties are clear on what the process is and what the obligations and timelines and things like that are.
Susan? I remember in the past, we, we dealt with liquor licenses and transfers and such. I particularly remember when the 99 came before us. And they had a very impressive program for training their staff and how to deal with any number of situations that might occur. So I'm guessing that training for the, both for the owners and for the people who are actually going to be serving, and protocols for how to handle, you know, how to refuse to serve someone who you don't think you should serve, et cetera, et cetera. Anyhow, I think that that may be a part of the package.
I think, yeah, okay. Mr. Borges?
Yes, as she was mentioning, I have all of my staff here, including myself, LaCilia, and whoever serve alcohol, we are all chip certified. And every year, we send like a list to the police, to the police department, you know, providing identification and a chip certification card for those persons who serve alcohol. So in that, I think we are fully in compliance with.
All right. So may I make a recommendation that we consider continuing this public hearing? Giving Mr. Morris and others as appropriate to work with the town manager's office and police department in reviewing the protocol and standards for this liquor license. And so that the town manager and police chief, and then asking the town manager's office and police chief to reevaluate their review of this request.
Don't we have to continue it to a specific date?
Yes, and that would be the 20-
Can I, maybe the first?
What's the first date in March, February?
The first.
February the first?
Yeah, give us a little bit of time to make sure we have it all straightened out.
Okay.
Okay. Move to continue the public hearing until February 1st.
Okay.
And, and I advise you that Mr. Morris will work and others as appropriate will work with the town manager's office and the chief of police regarding protocols and standards and their, so that they can further evaluate their degree of-
Compliance.
Compliance and acceptability, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, second. So will the clerk please call the role? Sorry, we did, yes, okay, yeah, that's correct, okay.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous, and this public hearing will be continued to February 1st. So, Mr. Morris, if you will be in touch with, I guess Jeremy is your contact, and, and get further instructions on how to work with the select board office and the chief of police. So, and then we'll hear your application again on February 1st.
Okay, thank you very much for all of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, the next agenda item is a review of the inholder license application by Best Western LLC, doing business as Best Western at historic Concord located at 740 Elm Street. Let's see, do we have representatives here for this? I don't see any that I'm aware of. So Jeremy, we have this application, the select board has seen this application. And I assume all the paperwork is in order?
It is, and just to follow up, this is coming from, we're doing the license renewal and Matt noted that we were missing Best Western. And so we contacted them and we worked to get their application for an inholder license and compliance. And so this is basically just a follow up on, on, on that.
And are people sleeping there?
They were oper, they were operating, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, just looking at the last application, we just looked at, what is the standard we're applying here?
So I, I think there's, there, Jeremy can talk about, he did some research on this and can talk about what the board can do in terms of fines. We did hear from the, as, this property also was recently transferred. And I think there may have been, quite honestly, a, a history that goes back a little bit of them, the prior owners even, operating without the license. And I think administratively on our end, or on the town's end, I just think it wasn't realized. But Jeremy, I don't know if you, you have a little bit more details on the history if you want to talk about that?
Sure, so when we looked into it, we contacted the owner and he sent us the health department license from the town. So clearly, it was just an issue where they thought that that was their license. And we had not had them for the last several years as a licensed inholder. And so the penalty under state law that the select board can choose to enact if they want to is a $100 per year fine for each year of operating without a license.
Jane? Sorry, go ahead, will you finish?
Is there any evidence that we notified them, that we were aware?
Not that I'm aware of, or could see in our records.
Yeah, I, I am still struck by the parallel nature of this and the last application we just discussed. Because even in the description that I heard, you know, with Rosini's, that they initially showed their victualer's license, you know, as opposed to their liquor license. And so here we have, again, the same sort of healthcare, health department versus other, and, you know, the same sort of operating without. I, I just want to make sure that we are very consistent in our application of things. And so I, I think clearly the fine is in order. You know, I think preventing operations of businesses is perhaps drastic, but, you know, it, it is something that I don't think we should just, you know, immediately just approve it without any kind of discussion.
That was not my, my point, I was just curious as to, you know, we, we seem to have a, some housekeeping issues on our end.
Yeah, I think that there's one, you know, lesson that we've taken from this, Jeremy and Chris and I have talked about this internally, that, that, you know, they were getting a, a license from the health department, appropriately so, but the life, the health department was not aware that they didn't have their inholder. And that's where, I think what distinguishes this from the other, from the application we just talked about, Matt, is, is there are, there were some issues on our end that I think contributed to the circumstances that we're in here. And the other thing is, you know, we, we didn't, you know, had we notified the Best Western to stop renting rooms because they didn't have this license and they continued to rent rooms, that would be, I think, a different matter. But that, you know, we notified them that they needed a license and they turned it around in a day. They, I think they genuinely believe that the license they have in the health department was the license they needed.
But didn't we hear that there was a problem with the other application, that the previous administrator didn't complete the process? So that there were problems on our end?
On Rosini's? On Rusini's?
Yes.
Well, I thi, I think the big issue there for us, and I think if you look at the, the chief's memo, and I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, kind of, um, you know, pour on, but, um, they were notified that they should not be selling. And, and they continue to. Which is the, which is the essence of the violation that's, that's outlined in the packet materials. It's, it's a bit of a different situation here.
Okay.
I, I, I get that there are parallels, believe me, it, it, it occurs to me that there are parallels as well, but there are, I think, there are key distinctions that, that differentiate this license. The other thing is, this is a, um, a local license, not one that also requires compliance with, with ABCC rules as well.
Any other comments from the select board? Okay, um. I would ask if, um, for the clerk, uh, for a motion from the clerk?
Certainly. Before we do that, should there be public comment?
Um, we could certainly do that. This is not a public hearing, but.
Then I, excuse me, I was out of turn.
Okay.
Um, move to approve the inholder license application by Best Western Hotel LLC, DBA, Best Western Historic Concord located at 740 Elm Street.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second from anyone on the board? Okay, if not, it looks like we're looking for further discussion on this. Any further discussion? Jane?
I think before we move this for approval, um, the fact that, uh, Best Western isn't present for this discussion, um, is a, um, I understand that, that from Jeremy and Steve and Stephen, that they turned this around quickly. But I'm, I'm surprised they're not actually here tonight to give us some background on how this happened and, and the new ownership, et cetera. I know that, um, that has been done in the previous discussion and, and, I think it would give me greater confidence that there was an understanding of process.
Okay. Um, I actually concur with that. Um.
How about if we continue to that first?
Okay, um, any other comments?
Well, I, I, I guess the only, if I may, Linda, I, I just, I'm not sure if, if, um, if this was continued, does that make it so they can't operate?
Sounds like it might be motivational.
Yeah, um, yeah, that is a distinction here, that's a difficult one, I think, because in one case, um, a previous situation, the people are still able to continue in business, uh, while we work out, uh, further exploration of their application. Um, yeah, very difficult. Um. I see we have, um, some hands in the public open. This is not a public hearing, uh, but given the nature of the discussion, I'm willing to consider some public comment, uh, if it is brief and to the point. Um, Mr. Puschrik? You're on mute. Andy?
Yes, uh, it's, uh, my name is Andy Puckrick. I live on 164 Belknap Street, and, uh, just a couple of quick comments. Uh, used, I think there was a restaurant, Michael's, in the same area as Rusini's, the same building, which is no longer in business. Now, they've gone out of business. Also, uh, the 99 restaurant in West Concord now is shut down because of COVID. And, uh, this is a really tough year for businesses to operate, for obvious reasons. And, uh, I'm not sure if the liquor license, I, is that a, is that a beer and wine license? It's not a bar, right? It's just beer and wine, I'm not sure. But, uh, at any rate, it's very difficult for a small business to operate these days. People come, you know, a pizzeria, they want to come and have a glass of wine, and, uh, it's not all takeout. And I, I think it's reasonable that they should at least be able to operate. If they don't have that, uh, license, that's going to be a severe impact to their business. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. Um, Tanya?
Um.
If you just repeat your, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, I agree with the concerns Matt has been raising about.
Tanya, sorry, just your name and address again, please.
Sure, Tanya, I said it, Tanya Galis, 62 Prescott Road.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I agree with the consistency concerns that Matt has been raising, and, uh, so, eh, do you think that Best Western, which has been such a long-term establishment with, uh, um, you know, with nationwide expertise on hotel running and rules and regulations, et cetera, if, if they lapsed on asking for a permit, um, that, that should be taken into consideration, that, that, that may have been, uh, not, not necessarily, uh, more excusable mishap than whatever happened at Rusini's. So I think that the parallels are very clear, and I think both businesses should be treated under the same kind of guidelines and consistency guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Carlin Reed, 83 Wits End. You might consider two aspects. One aspect is not granting the license, whether to grant the license. The other aspect is whether to impose the $100 fine. I don't know if the select board has the equivalent of an order to show cause, but you could ask, or you could ask the Best Western as a possibility to, um, come and appear before you and tell you, tell you why they should not or be subject to the fine. Now, that would be a different piece from, uh, whether you should not have their license revoked. That might be an option, I don't know. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Stephen?
Linda, I just, I, I just want to go back to the point, and, and I, listen, I, I don't want to seem like I'm ignorant of, of the apparent parallels, but I, I just want to remind the board that the licenses we're talking about are very different, um, both from a statutory construct, a liability, and a liability standpoint. An in, an innkeeper's license is, uh, almost a, a formality, because the, the hotel has to have licenses from the health department and other departments, as does a restaurant. But, um, I, I just think it's much more of a, uh, like I said, a light, a, a light level license, uh, almost a formality, whereas a liquor license, as the board knows, as licensing commission, uh, it requires a lot more due diligence and, and rigor, uh, both at the local level and at the state level. And so while I appreciate the, the, the idea of consistency in treatment, I think that needs to be viewed to the lens of the, the licenses we're talking about are fundamentally different, and, and the circumstances involved in this situation are fundamentally different.
Susan?
Um, I just want to verify that part of, one of the reasons that the Best Western hadn't submitted an application is that they haven't done it for a number of years, and no one on the town end has ever, um, noticed or until this year. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I hesitate to comment as a non-select board member, um, but the, on our end of the town manager's office, when we do the license renewals, we send out the notification that there is a, a license to be renewed. And then I work with them to get paperwork in line and get it in front of the select board for a vote. In this situation, we didn't have them on file for a long time, so if they changed ownership, um, and were operating, I mean, from our end, it's hard to know if there is someone out there, if we, you know, don't know every business in the town. So on, that's kind of our end of the situation. And, um, just to add in that, um, there is, to my knowledge, and it looks like to Stephen's knowledge, there's no seeming intent to, um, be going against the rules. So that's what I have to say on my end.
All right. I, I, I think this is a very difficult situation, um, that we're confronting here. Um, I think we've already shown our willingness to the former applicate, applicants, um, that we're willing to work with them, a, and we've scheduled a date for that. Um, I think in this situation, uh, we have some direct responsibility, uh, in this, um, where we find ourselves, um, on this application as well. Um, and, um, I do think that, um, jeopardizing the business entirely, particularly given this environment, is, is a difficult position to be in. Um, I guess I would recommend at this time that we do consider, um, a motion, uh, to approve, uh, with the caveat, um, that they appear before us, um, uh, on February 1st, um, to talk about, um, why they found themselves in this position. And we can discuss the fine at that time.
Uh, are you ready for a motion, then?
Yes, thank you.
Move to approve the inholder li, inholder license application by Best Western Hotel LLC, DBA Best Western Historic Concord located at 740 Elm Street with the, um, provision that the representative from the hotel appears before the board on February 1st to discuss the matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Um, Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Yeah, that's unanimous, and I so declare. Um, we expect the town manager's office, um, to deliver, um, the seriousness of this message to, um, the representative that will represent Best Western. Thank you. Okay, um, we have several presentations, uh, on the board today, uh, for the board to consider, and I appreciate, um, that we want to give due time to their presentations, but at the same time, uh, we hope that you're going to be presenting a high-level, um, presentation, as opposed to maybe some of the details that you would have gone through with your respective committees, allowing us ample time to answer your, uh, any questions and, and consider comments. So, um, I want to welcome, um, Dave Woods and Laura Scott, uh, I guess from CMLP, who's here to talk about the decarbonization plan, uh, which first came to our attention, I think, um, recently, uh, in one of our weekly managers' reports. So welcome, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thanks for having us. Um, I'm going to share, share my screen. Just give me a second. Uh, Laura Scott, she's our power supply rates administrator. Um, we're going to go through this together, but I'm going to kick it over to Laura for now.
Thank you, Dave, and, uh, thank you, Select Board, for inviting us here today to talk about CMLP's decarbonization plan. Um, we understand that this is a topic of interest, uh, to many folks in the town. We originally gave this presentation to the Climate Action Advisory Board, uh, about a month ago, and we're going to go over this here with you tonight. It is fairly short, and, um, we'll move through it, uh, quickly. Thank you, Dave. So we'll look at a high-level overview of CMLP's decarbonization strategy. Um, we'll cover in-town solar generation and talk about how CMLP purchases power. Uh, we'll discuss the difference between purchasing power that comes with renewable energy certificates, and also purchasing REX, not to be confused with regional emergency call centers, uh, that stands in our world for renewable energy certificates, uh, that don't have any physical power associated with them. Um, we'll try to show you a slide that we believe, um, gives you a good idea of the progress on the decarbonization strategy, and also, um, want to mention to you a number of programs that CMLP has in place that are not related to power supply that also help the town reduce carbon emissions. So, next slide. Uh, so CMLP's goal is to provide 100% non-emitting electricity by 2030. That was voted on at the 2017, um, annual meeting. Uh, we will accomplish this by purchasing both generation or power, um, as I said, that is accompanied by renewable energy certificates, and also, um, purchasing renewable energy certificates that do not come with physical power, also referred to as non-associated REX, uh, to cover that portion of the portfolio that we are unable to meet with, uh, generation that, that comes associated with certificates. Uh, another big strategy, oh, sorry, Dave, go back a bit. Uh, another big strategy is to invest in in-town solar generation, and also to provide rebates and incentives to support beneficial electrification and energy efficiency. Okay, next slide. So here's a graph of, uh, the cumulative and annual progress that CMLP has made toward promoting, uh, in-town solar generation. The individual blue bars represent the annual additions. Um, on the left axis, the unit of measure is, uh, kilowatts of DC capacity. Uh, and the red line is simply the sum of the individual blue bar showing the cumulative, uh, capacity. And that can be seen on the right, uh, axis in KW DC, so that by 2020, you can see that that red line almost reaches the 4,000 kilowatt mark, uh, which is the same thing as four megawatts, um, of behind-the-meter residential and non-residential solar PV generating capacity on CMLP's system. In addition, uh, CMLP also purchases, uh, a total of 6.4 megawatts of AC capacity, uh, solar generation that is owned by and operated by third parties, uh, through purchase-power agreements. So that if you add the PPA, purchase-power agreements, uh, capacity with the behind-the-meter capacity, you're looking at about 10.2 megawatts of in-town solar generation. Next slide. How CMLP purchases power. CMLP enters into four commitments, uh, ranging from an hour to 20 years or more for energy, capacity, and transmission. When CMLP looks to purchase new energy resources, uh, in particular, uh, energy from renewable, uh, projects, we typically go as part of a buying consortium. CMLP is an equity owner and member of an energy services company in Massachusetts called Energy New England. Um, as one of a number of Massachusetts municipal electric utilities, we are able to offer an attractive uh, offtake agreement to project developers by being able to agree to take 100% of the offtake. Uh, these projects need to be built at scale to be economic and are typically 50 megawatts or, or larger in size. CMLP alone could not agree to take 50 megawatts. Um, we only need something like 2 megawatts. And so by going as a consortium, um, we're able to improve the chances that we can get new renewable projects developed. Uh, another thing that is, um, sometimes confused when we talk about CMLP purchasing, uh, purchasing practices, unlike power, um, renewable energy certificates are traded in arrears. That means that, um, we don't buy or sell the certificates for generation until after that generation has already happened. So for example, uh, power that was produced in the first power that was produced in the first quarter of 2020 has their renewable energy certificates, along with their numbers, minted or generated on June 15, 2020. People then trade those certificates between July and September of that year so that we will not know how many renewable energy certificates we will purchase for the 2020 year until June of 2021. Next slide, please. The Climate Action Advisory Board asks us to address specifically, what is the difference between how CMLP approaches purchasing renewable energy certificates that come with generation versus how it purchases non-associated certificates? And basically, it's simple. CMLP attempts to purchase all reasonably-priced generation that we can, that has associated certificates. Reasonably priced is obviously a term that is open to interpretation. And I would ask David to comment on how CMLP interprets this concept.
Yeah, we've been doing this for a number of years. And, you know, we look at a number of things. You know, we're not going to spend, you know, 20 cents a kilowatt hour. That's just, right now, too high. But, you know, we will pay higher than the market to get a clean energy source. And we have done that. And we'll continue to do it. But we kind of look at where the market is, where the REC prices are, and, you know, come up with a number based on that. But again, we really have to balance the fiscal responsibility so that the rates don't go through the roof just because we had an opportunity to buy something at 20 or 25 cents, you know, when maybe the going price is 7 cents. So that's what we do. We factor it in, and we figure out what a reasonable price is.
So basically, we purchase as much physical power as we can find that has RECs. And to the extent that amount does not meet the full needs of the plant, we will then purchase non-associated Massachusetts Class 1 RECs equal to the difference limited by rates. What do we mean, limited by rates? The REC procurement strategy is purposely-- has purposely set a fixed amount of money that the light plant will spend per year achieving renewable energy goals so that rates do not-- rates are not impacted wildly from year to year. And so we basically have a pool of money that we can use to purchase renewable energy. And we will use that and try to buy as much as that allowance will give us. And in the long run, if what the amount collected in rates to purchase the renewable energy is insufficient to meet that 100% renewable goal, then the CMLP board can certainly increase rates as needed to allow us to meet the goal. Next slide, please. Okay, this slide is busy. And I've had a number of comments that it doesn't appear to make sense, which I appreciate. But I'm going to try to walk you through it because it does contain a lot of information. And I think once you understand the numbers, it will become clear to you where we stand today with respect to our goals. So the way to read this is-- so for example, in 2016, the numbers at the bottom, the blue column and the green, are energy that we purchased that came with RECs. We had 7% that came with Massachusetts Class 1 RECs and another 2% that came with Maine Class 2 RECs. The remaining 91% of power that was purchased in that year came from emitting sources. Not much changed in 2017. And then in 2018, that was the first year CMLP began purchasing non-associated Class 1 RECs. We had 11% of the physical purchased power come with certificates, 8% Class 1 and 3% Class 2. We would have had 89% emitting. However, we used the money collected in that year to purchase the equivalent of 42% of non-associated Massachusetts Class 1 2018 RECs, offsetting some of that 89%. In 2019, REC prices went up. And so even though we were collecting the same amount in rates, we were able to purchase only 33% of non-associated Massachusetts Class 1 RECs. However, the amount of power that came with RECs did increase that year from 11% in 2018 to 16% in 2019. And you can see in 2020, 2021, and 2022, those solid colored columns at the bottom are increasing. So we're able to buy more generation that comes with Class 1 RECs, Class 2 RECs. And then we begin to purchase power that comes with emissions-free energy certificates generated by nuclear-based power. And so that in 2021, while we have not completed the purchase of non-associated certificates for that year, based on the amount that's being collected in rates, we anticipate that we'll be able to purchase 44% non-associated RECs. And combining that with the 28% of generation that comes with RECs, we arrive at 28 plus 44, which is probably 76, if my arithmetic is correct, percent non-emitting for 2021. The reason the bars do not go up to 100% starting in 2022 is because I want to show you that in those years, there's still a remainder of the portfolio that has not been forward committed to. In 2022, CMLP has already agreed to purchase 31% of its expected needs from emitting sources, decreasing to 20% in 2023. That's the last year for which CMLP has made forward commitments to purchase emitting power. And so that there is plenty of room in the portfolio from 2022 beyond to invest in additional renewable resources to increase that amount of power that we're buying that comes with certificates. So that is-- we may have questions on that, but that's kind of my explanation of how to read these numbers. Next slide, Dave. This is nothing to--
Laura, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am. I can't hear her.
You're in mute, London.
I was on. Would you-- Laura, on that last slide, since there was so much information presented, would you like to entertain questions specific to that slide now? Or would you like to wait-- hold the questions till later?
I would defer to your judgment on that.
Yeah, I prefer to hold them till the end.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, this slide is busy, and we are not going to go through it in any detail. It is merely to show you-- this is a download from the New England Power Pool's Generation Information System, also known as GIS. This is the official place where someone can go to see how many renewable energy certificates Concord Municipal Light has retired. It'll show you the date that the power was generated, where it came from. So for example, the first one, it's from Spruce Mountain Wind Project. It shows the actual certificate serial numbers associated with the generation. The fuel type was wind, and it was 584-- these are megawatt hours-- of power that was retired. That generation qualified for Massachusetts Class 1 certificates off to the right. So anybody can actually go into the system and see the disposition of these certificates from an accounting perspective. Next slide, please. This may not be of as much interest to the Select Board as it was to the CAB, but they wanted us to-- wanted CMLP to define what CMLP means when they use the terms "not emitting," "renewable," and "carbon-free" because they can be confusing, and one person's definition may not meet another's. CMLP tries, you know, not to have its own proprietary definition for these terms, but rather to be transparent about the categories that it's reporting. So we typically report our totals both by certificate type-- the Massachusetts Class 1, Maine Class 2, and emissions-free energy certificates that you saw on the previous page. We also report generation by fuel type and by source type, such as NIPA, which stands for New York Power Authority, a federal hydro project to which CMLP has entitlements, and also by the fuel type, as I said, wind, solar, et cetera. Next slide. I believe this is our-- close to our final slide. And really, I just wanted to mention that CMLP does a lot to help the town reduce carbon emissions that aren't related to the power supply, which all the previous discussion we've had has been about making sure that the power we purchase is from renewable energy sources. CMLP has also made a significant commitment to making sure that we maximize the amount of in-town solar generation. To date, 379 customers have received solar rebates for installing solar on their premises. We've spent almost $1.3 million on this initiative. And as we showed on the previous slide, we have 4 megawatts of cumulative capacity to show for that. Space and water heating, we have rebates and low rates for heat pumps and ETS systems. We've spent about $270,000 in air and ground-source heat pumps and heat pump-water heater rebates to date. The amount of rate relief that is accorded to folks who use electricity for space and water heating is significant. We offer about $350,000 per year in advantage charging rates. That's primarily for ETS systems. A little bit of that is for electric vehicles. With electric vehicles, we have programs that reward Level 2 and off-peak charging. Over 200 households enjoy these programs. We believe we will have invested about $100,000 in these programs by the end of 2021. And with regard to energy efficiency, we have rebates and offer supplies for residential and commercial customers. Regarding energy efficiency, we've spent about $700,000 in commercial lighting upgrade rebates to date, another $200,000 in weatherization, and about $100,000 in LED light bulbs, totally more than $1 million for these programs. So this is a snapshot of some of the programs we offer. I believe the last slide is simply a detailed slide on what our solar rebates are that I'm not going to go into in the interest of time. But folks can read that at their leisure. And if they have any questions, certainly let us know. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Laura. A lot of work and a lot of information represented there. So I'd like to open it at this time to questions from the board. Jane?
Thank you, David, and thank you, Laura. And I'm excited to see the presentation. As somebody who's worked in this field for many, many years, forward motion is thrilling. Just a couple of things. I just wanted to clarify for anybody who's listening. My understanding that all the RECs, whether we generate them, purchase them, or purchase them as a package, are retired. So they're never going to be resold, correct? Right.
Yep.
And I was looking at that slide, and maybe, Laura, you can put it back up. What you're talking about is this is as far as we go in terms of our forward contracts for everything, correct? In other words, where we don't get to 100%, these are all the commitments we've made, period.
That is correct. I mean, I'm sorry. Let me just clarify that we have made commitments beyond 2030. But in the interest of space, I haven't-- I didn't try to put everything out there. That's just--
But my point is simply that it wasn't just the fossil commitments that we are not continuing-- that we don't have in evidence past 2023. But these are the entirety of all the other commitments that we have to 2030, period. So the-- you know, in other words, in 2030, right now, we have a-- you know, 40-- or what's 55% still to determine. Which could all be pink, it could all be green, it could all be blue. We don't know.
Right.
Okay. And then finally, I was excited by the description of a purchasing-- a muni purchasing group. It's actually something that I approached MLAC about in 2011. Sometimes it takes a long time for those ideas to percolate. And I assume that's a-- it's a-- is it a group of municipals of like size? Is it-- you know, I would be interested more because I think that the emissions impact from a greenhouse gas perspective beyond Concord's own interests can be really, really changed if we're talking about bringing in some of the munis that have not yet shown forward thinking in terms of generation and emissions longer term.
Yeah, so the group that we're an equity owner in, there's six owners, all different-sized MLPs. You know, some-- one is about the size of us, and then the other ones are a little bigger. So it's got a little bit of diversity to it. Within that group, we have 21 other MLPs that are members, but owners. So it's a little over half of the MLPs. And fortunately, most of them are all thinking similar to us now, where that wasn't the case in the past. So we're getting some good movement and seeing more opportunities present themselves. So we're excited about that.
I would just encourage CMLP, whenever possible, to showcase the way we are leading other municipals in the state to make decisions that perhaps they hadn't made previously.
Yep. Yeah, we do have a number of MLPs that are following some of the stuff that we've taken the lead on. And, you know, even some of the large MLPs who was speaking with another general manager last week and kind of outlined what we're doing, and that's what they're going to start doing. So definitely moving in the right direction.
And I would also encourage that across the board, whether it be our heat pump, our residential solar, both of which I know are part of-- are being adopted by others, but also any of our other progressive emissions lowering targets.
Yes, Terry.
Excellent presentation. Thank you. This is the second time I was at the CAB meeting, and it was excellent there as well. Have a question and a comment. I would say that not everyone in the public totally understands non-associated RECs. I know I kind of understand it. Maybe can you go into a little more detail about-- or maybe give an example of how this works?
Sure, I appreciate that. I probably should have done a better job when we first talked about it, but thanks for the question. So the environmental attribute of a generating facility is a separate legal product that can be traded separately from its other attributes. So for example, a person who owns a power plant or runs a power plant, let's say it's a wind facility, they can sell the physical generation, the output of the electricity of the plant, to one counterparty. They can sell the capacity, which is a different legal attribute, to a second party. And they could sell the renewable energy certificates to a third party. So they don't have to sell the physical power with the certificates. So CMLP tries to purchase as much physical power with certificates. But in some instances, we're not able to do that. And so what we can do after the fact, because they trade in arrears, is go out and purchase those certificates that aren't coming with the physical power at a later time. And that's what we refer to as non-associated certificate. It's not associated with physical power.
So what would be an example of that?
Of someone who's trading the certificate separately from the power?
Right.
It could be a party that did purchase the physical power that came with certificates and decided to sell them, right? We could be purchasing it from them-- and decided to sell them, right? We could be purchasing it from them. Or it could be the power plant developer who thought they would get a higher price selling the certificate separately, so they sold the power to one party, and then later decided to sell the certificates hoping to get a higher price. That's another possibility.
Okay, thank you. And just to comment, it looks like we're proceeding really well toward our goal of non-emitting by 2030, which is wonderful. The only thing that really gives me serious pause, I personally do not like becoming more dependent on the nuclear power, and if there's any way to, you know, do this, do more solar, wind, and hydro and less nuclear in the future.
We do look for that stuff regularly, and, you know, E&amp;E's actively looking for us, so we hear you.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Susan?
Yeah, I have a question and then another question. What's the difference between non-emitting versus carbon-free? And can you give me an example of each? It seems to me that they're, they kind of overlap, but obviously, they're different.
So the question was, non-emitting and carbon-free?
Yeah. What's, what is the difference between them? And can you give me an example?
So as I said, we try not to have our own proprietary definition for these things. In my mind, if you were to just ask me, what is the difference between those two? I can't think of one. I mean, I think they're the same.
Okay.
I think the distinction would be more between renewable and non-emitting, right? So nuclear is non-emitting, but it's not renewable.
Yeah. Okay. And my other question is sort of a follow-up to what Terry said. What I can see in your chart is that it's 2020, this past year, where nuclear first appeared on the scene, and it's projected to be a bigger and bigger part of the whole package. And while I understand that it's not emitting, I mean, we all remember, you know, Three Mile Island, and I'm worried about the safety of the product and what kind of, if, this is probably Three Mile Island that it's coming from, and what kind of regulations are in place to ensure the safety of it?
So that would be a question that I would defer to E&amp;E because they deal with that directly. So I don't think I can give it a really good answer right now. We can, we can get you the answers on that, but I don't want to misspeak.
So we haven't purchased any power from a facility that was formerly known as Three Mile Island. I don't even know if that is still operating. But the power that we're talking about here from nuclear generation is actually located in New Hampshire. And as you probably know, there are a number of, you know, safety commissions specifically in place for nuclear. And as David said, I'm not prepared to give a list of those tonight, but your point is well-taken. You know, nothing is without risk, and certainly, different people, different countries have handled this differently. You know, some countries think nuclear should be a big part of achieving non-carbon emitting, others not so much. I will say that, you know, if we could purchase 100% of our needs from solar and winds today at anything close to what rates currently are, that certainly would be our preferred path. And the path that we've taken has tried to balance, you know, getting to 100% carbon-free in a fiscally responsible way with the generation that's available today. And we certainly are hopeful that more truly renewable generation will be available to purchase in the coming years, which is why, you know, we have quite a bit of the portfolio still left to buy and are hopeful that that type of generation will become available. But, you know, in the meantime, we have to try to meet our obligations with what is available.
Okay.
Can I just follow up with that?
Okay, quickly, and then I'm going to ask a select board member who hasn't spoken to have a chance to speak, okay?
That sort of is the point of my, of my questions, is that if you set the emission standards, and then you have to, it's kind of like the tail lagging the dog in some ways, that the emission standard is setting the stage for not, only using non-emitting sources. And I just worry about the analysis, what kind of analysis between using, emitting and using what is potentially very dangerous source? And anyway, that's my question and comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Matt, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Well, I was just thinking that when you think of the non-associated RECs, you know, I almost wonder whether we should equivalent, consider it to be equivalent to invest in future power source alternatives like fusion. You know, that the money that we're throwing into non-associated RECs is effectively an investment in renewable power, into somebody's project that they did, and it pays for the renewable aspect of it. If we, if we could successfully invest in fusion, which may become commercially viable and ended up with a stake in it, it could end up helping us financially in the long term as well. It's just an interesting, creative way to think of it, because base loads, you know, the reason we've got this non-emitting fusion, fission, nuclear is because it's very hard to get a base load, you know, from our other renewable sources, whereas fusion eventually would provide that.
Jane?
Well, first of all, I have to thank Matt Johnson for giving the speech that my company works on, because we are primarily focused on fusion. And having come to that for the very specific reasons that Matt described and that Lauren, David have been describing, which is that unfortunately, despite our general hopes and wishes that you could build a portfolio, even for a small town like, relatively small town like Concord, purely out of solar, wind, and Class 1 renewables, it doesn't work that way. And you can't, we have not yet created a way where all utilities, municipal or investor-owned or publicly-owned, can simultaneously cut all their emissions as well as be on what we consider Class 1 or conventional renewable energy. So with that as a fact, yes, I would love to see us invest in fusion. But I will put that aside as a perhaps direct conflict with my role as a select board member. I did want to make the point, I was trying to figure out where our investments in storage might have, might be seen in this, because obviously, without storage, we have no dispatch capacity, or we're missing critical peak shedding opportunities in the future. I understand I'm being wonky now, so I don't want to discourage the public from following this conversation, because I think you've done a really good job at projecting some positive growth.
Yeah, and storage is part of our strategy. We're actually looking at it now. But it's kind of, to me, it all ties in with this, but it could be a topic in and of itself. We could be here all night if we wanted to start talking about that, but it isn't the, Laura and I are working on that, so. And more from a utility scale size.
Well, I think too, incenting the public with the ability to charge differently based upon time of day, and then themselves investing in storage might be very helpful, because I think that there are members of the public who would be happy to do that.
We are on our way to making that a reality, Mr. Johnson. In fact, just on Thursday, responses were due to our RFP for consultants to help us choose a new AMI system. The AMI meters, advanced metering infrastructure is what AMI stands for, are prerequisite to being able to offer time-of-use rates. And so we are set, we have set in motion, you know, movement towards what you're talking about.
So it's been very helpful to have this discussion, even if it's at a preliminary level here, but clearly, we've got knowledgeable people in the room who put a lot of work and investment in this. If I can just ask one related question, and perhaps you already mentioned this. How much money has been spent to date on purchasing RECs? And is that directly an investment that ratepayers are making to happen?
So in 2018, we spent approximately, and I don't have exact numbers at my fingertips, but approximately $800,000, no, excuse me. Yeah, that's roughly right, about $800,000, because it was a partial year. In a full year, like 2019, we spent about one, between 1.6 and 1.7 million dollars purchasing non-associated RECs, and that is money that is collected in rates. The fees that we collect for that purpose are embedded in the energy rates.
Thank you. Well, this has been very helpful to the public, and we know that continuing work is being done on energy sustainability, and we appreciate all that you're doing to make that happen. So thank you.
Well, thanks for having us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Right. Our next presentation is a review of the residential tax exemption. As some of you will remember, a couple of weeks ago, one of our select board members specifically raised the question when we did rate, tax rate certification, had a tax rate certification discussion, and one of our select board members raised the question about the residential exemption. I know that this has been visited a number of years previously, but we appreciate the current snapshot of the department's view on this and informing the public of what residential exemption actually looks like. So I see Lain Partridge here, Tony Assessor, and Tom Matthews, who's Chair of the Board of Assessors. So welcome, and please start your presentation.
Thank you very much. Just going to share my screen here.
So Lain, before we get started, we're getting a lot of feedback, so I would ask everyone who's not muted to please mute, and hopefully, that will clear up the audio. Thank you.
Okay, so we did take your request.
Lain, unfortunately, we were, it's totally garbled. I'm wondering if you can either sign out and sign on again, because sometimes that helps, or-- So apparently, he is trying that. While he's doing that, Tom, I know that you, a similar presentation was made to the Board of Assessors a couple of weeks ago. Are there any introductory comments you might be able to make for us without the slides?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we want to talk about is just that this is a tool that the state has in the toolbox that communities can use for trying to figure out revenue. And we just need to see if it's a tool that should be applied to the community of Concord. And that's what we kind of have looked at as a board and what we'll share with you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. How's that? Any better?
Much better.
Okay, let's go up to this again. There we go. Let's give this a shot. Okay, so the residential exemption. We based our numbers and our analysis on the just-set FY 2021 tax data, tax rate valuations and so forth. Here is the law that reflects it. It's Chapter 59, Section 5C. The underlying parts are the kind of highlights of it. It only applies to the residential class of real estate. It's a vote of the Board of Selectmen. You can go up to 35% of the average assessed value, and it only applies to the principal residence, owned and occupied properties in town. So kind of a little summary here, residential, again, select board, 35%. There actually is a part of the law that says that it's where people file their tax return that helps determine it. This is an interesting program because it's an exemption on the value, not necessarily, it does affect the tax, but the way you calculate is on value. The levy for the town or what the town collects is the same, but it does work as a shift in the tax rate. So properties that are included, single-family homes, condominiums, part of a two-family or three-family home, they don't get the entire property, but the half or the part, the percentage that they live in. Same with the mixed-use properties. Properties that are excluded, non-owner occupied homes, so second homes or homes that are rented would not qualify. Properties held in trust do not qualify, and that's an SJC case, Medford versus Kirby. Apartment buildings, it does not apply to nursing homes, group homes, or assisted living. So it's basically any residential property where the, it is the residence of the owner. So land doesn't include either. Just vacant land would not get the exemption either. Only 15 municipalities out of the entire state have the exemption. Two communities that joined most recently in 2006 are Everett and Barnstable. The large metropolitan communities where this makes the most sense is Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, Chelsea, Everett, Malden, Somerville, Waltham, and Watertown. The resort communities where they're taking advantage of the second homes down the Cape, we have Barnstable, Trill, and Nantucket, Tisbury, Wellfree, and Province Town. A thing to note here also is that 10 out of the 15 also shift the tax rate to the commercial properties, most of them to the max. So there is an offset of the increase in the residential tax rate by a shift of the burden from the commercial to the, from the residential to the commercial. So they're getting a double benefit there, which Concord really can't take advantage of. Even if you shifted the max to the commercial, it only represents 8% of the total base of the town, so the part that gets, the residential gets benefited by would be minuscule. What we see in this would be an increase in rents for 865 renters in town. So that's the rental units that we have calculated exist in Concord. They, most rents have some sort of a tax escalator or are only one year, and the landlords, I'm sure, would not absorb this increase. They would pass it on. Exclusion of trust properties, anybody who has their property in a trust and are not both the beneficiary and the trustee would not be able to get it. We do have a reduction in the participants of the senior mean exemption depending on how extensive you apply the exemption. One of the things we looked at was the, of the municipalities that do have the exemption, the percent that actually qualify for it is fairly small. There was only one community that was, the highest was 78. Most of them are around 45% or less. So if you think of a community down the Cape, the majority of the people that live there year-round is a smaller percentage of the total population or the total properties in town. So not a large amount would be qualifying. In Concord, almost everybody is an owner occupant. So we're looking at, on the residential side, 5,977 parcels that we have to investigate to make sure they're the owner occupied person. And, you know, even if it's very obvious that, you know, their name is on the deed and they're getting the tax bill and everything else, we still have to look at every single property market so that if we do go through this, we'd have a way to identify-- we'd have a way to identify them quickly in the billing process. So we're probably looking at another staff person. Also impacts on finances. If we don't get it right the first year, the overlay account could be affected. Because if we don't have everybody qualified prior to setting the tax rate, and then somebody applies after that, it doesn't readjust the shift. All the money comes out of the overlay account. So you got to get it right the first time, basically, is what it comes down to. Basic formula in calculating the tax rate, we take the levy divided by the total value of the property times 1,000. Currently, we're at 1,471. What we did here is figured out the values by class, by type. So, single-family, 5 billion; miscellaneous, 136 million, so forth, to get the total amount of the residential at 6,127. That, we then have to divide by the total number, and that gives us the average residential value of 1,025,223. And remember, I said that this is done on value. So now, what, to put this into operation, the select board would vote on a percentage of the average residential value that you want to exempt. So it ranges anywhere from, you know, 1% to 35%. I did it out on 5% intervals here so you can see what would be affected. So if you did it at 5%, every property that qualified would get $51,000 off of their value. 35%, you get $358,000 off of your value. So it depends on what number you pick, what you get off. Here's the tricky part. So this is a rough estimate. Now, I can't promise these are the numbers because, again, we'd have to investigate every single property to understand what it would be. But we, for purposes of discussion, in single-family homes, we said 90% of the properties would qualify. Miscellaneous, 75%. Multifamily, 80%. Condominiums, 85% and so forth. Because we have to figure out how many people are going to get it and how many people don't to be able to calculate the tax rate.
Wait, Alaina, can you go back to that real quick?
Yep.
Sure. So I just wanted to let the select board know that on these calculations, roughly 83% of the Concord residents would qualify for the exemption. The next closest community at 78%, which Lain mentioned, was Waltham. Not really has, doesn't really have a similar makeup to Concord. I wouldn't call it a comparable town to us. After Waltham, Brookline and Cambridge are at 60% of the residents apply. And if we wanted to find a community that has a feel similar to Concord, I would say Nantucket feels like Concord a lot. And in Nantucket, only 20% of the residents take advantage of the residential exemption. So, you know, when we talk about tools that the state allows us to use, this may not be a tool that applies to Concord, but we'll kind of go through our presentation on that. That's all I want to add, Alain. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. So, again, I, we have to take some numbers just to, or some guesses to be able to give you some numbers of comparison. So we picked that 20%. So if the select board voted to do 20% residential exemption, everybody who qualified would get $205,000 off of their value. We then recalculate, we come up with the values. So if you just take the 4,142, 43, times the 205, you get the 849 million. So we have to know what we're giving away. So then, once we know that, we can figure out where we go with the tax rate. So if you chose 20% to make up the difference of all those people getting the exemption, we would have to raise the rate to $17.39. So that would be the way we would get, we would have to recalculate the tax rate to get where we're at. So you take the value minus the value that's getting reduced, gives us a new total value of the town. Levy stays the same. You still get the same amount of money to spend, but it does raise the tax rate to account for it. So if you can see, we're at, the yellow line is where we're at this year with the senior mean exemption part turned, put in, which was a penny. We're at $14.72. So anybody below $1,222,000 in value of their house would get a tax break. Anybody above that would get the increase. The yellow line at $1,222 is where the increase in the tax rate and the amount of the exemption coming off the value equalize. So that's the equalized number there. You can see at zero, the rate's the same. I did do an effective tax rate, just recalculating the tax rate for those. And obviously, the lower number valued, you get a much lower effective tax rate. And then the higher you go up, the higher the tax rate goes.
Lain, can I share something to the select board on this slide?
Yep.
Is that at the 122250 value in the town of Concord, right now, 77% of the residential units are assessed below that number. And that population generates about 55% of our tax revenue. And then the tax burden that we would be shifting to, the number above that, there are only 23% of the units in town would be taking on the burden of this shift. And they currently represent 45% of our revenue. So this would be a benefit to many people in the community, but we would be shifting the burden of revenue growth to 23% of the town. So I think that's something to note when you look at the numbers.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the, we took a look at the senior means tested exemption that we have. The exemption is based on a taxpayer paying 10% or more of their income to taxes. So it would have an impact. If you voted for something under 15%, everybody would still qualify. At 20%, we would lose two people out of that program, 25%, three. And if you went to the max, we would lose eight applicants out of the program. So here is just a quick add-up of the apartments and what we have. These 765 apartment units. We have 99 two-families, that's only counting one side. We have one three-family. Total units, 866, would be the renters that would not get the benefit of this program at all. And in fact, probably get a severe impact on their next year's rent if not, if they didn't have expense clauses in their leases. They might get it immediately. If not, they would certainly get it the next year. So probably the poorest part of our community, not necessarily, but most people who rent, you know, are on the lower side of the scale. Not always, but they tend to be. So you're going to affect them pretty heavily. We also want to take a look at values and what, how we stack up to our neighbors. So the average value for Concord is 1,062. This is just single-family properties. We didn't do the whole residential spectrum. Acton is the average value, 612. Maynard's, 393. Lexington, more in line with us, at 1,000,001. However, Lexington shifts their commercial rate, which brings their residential rate down considerably. They, if they did a uniform rate like we did, would be much higher. We then did a comparison, looking at similar homes. So we took 2,500-square-foot home in each one of those comparison towns, just so you could kind of get an idea of what we're looking at. So Concord, 2,400 square foot, almost 2,500, 947,000, has a tax bill of 13,480. If we go to Acton, also similar house size, 2,408, actually slightly smaller, you'd have a value of 664 and a tax bill of 12. So much higher percentage of the value goes to taxes in Acton. Maynard, it's even a bigger shift. They have a, you'd only have a $456,000 value. Tax rate is way up there at $20. $9,000 tax bill as a percentage of value is considerably higher than Concord. And then finally, Lexington, similar to ours, 1405 tax rate, value 859. Tax bill at 12069, similar to where we are. So in summary, it's a redistribution, redistribution of the tax levy among residential properties. So you would be shifting the burden from the lower-valued properties to the higher-valued properties. Exemption is a misnomer. It's really a tax shift. It tends to penalize the low-income renters because the apartment buildings would not apply in the program. So some recommendations. The Board of Assessors did, is not a political body. They don't vote on political matters. That's your department. They try to stay as independent as possible. They have to make difficult decisions on people's, value of people's houses, which obviously affects their tax bills. So they don't really want to get into the political part of it. However, they did take a vote not to support this of what you do. But again, it's totally up to the Board of Selectmen. So they just wanted you to know that. Some next steps that we think might be helpful would be public hearings to see what the public says about the program. That we still have a tax fairness committee that's in effect. You should probably talk to them. They certainly would, should have an opinion on it. We would ask that if you are thinking about this or if you're leaning towards it, that you take a preliminary vote sooner than later, because we are going to have to get an additional staff member. And we would have to get all the properties sorted out. We would have to get rewritten computer programs for the billing software, probably rewritten transfer file data from the, our main database, which is the Kama database, and to switch it over to the billing database to be billed. And then Department of Revenue needs to know upfront before we start the tax rate-setting process, which we have a September 1st date with the senior mean tested exemption. And when I talked to the Deputy Bureau Chief of Bureau of Accounts at DOR this week, he said that September 1st would be a good date. You need to let them know. They do have to kind of approve it. They have to turn switches and get things changed up for when we submit our information to the Gateway Program. So we need some timeframe. So it's tight. It's tight to do it this year. So if you're, we think we can get it done if you want to do it, but you really need to tell us, you know, no later than February that you want to do it so we can get working on it. So I guess that's about all we have. And Tom and I would love to answer any questions you have.
Lynda, you're on mute.
You are on mute.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you. I'll start with a question, which is, if the town were to adopt a residential exemption, what would be the impact on your recommendation for a split rate?
Concord still, it wouldn't change anything because Concord has only less than 8% commercial-industrial. So even if you shift the entire amount that you're allowed to do, which is 150%, it's still such a small percentage that you're benefiting the residential. It would be very, it wouldn't really offset the tax burden on the residential enough to crush the commercial. And right now, as we all know, the commercial is not doing good. Your conversations earlier tonight. I can't, again, that's a political decision up to you. So you're welcome to do that. I have not brought that up with the board, but the board has never supported the shift on the commercial.
Thank you. Question from the board. Matt?
So I was the one that originally raised this. And I have to say now, in light of the additional information, and thanks very much for the clear presentation, that, you know, while I think we needed a screwdriver, that what this law provides is a blade screwdriver. And what Concord is, is a Phillips-head screw. And so it just doesn't fit. It's too bad. I think that there's really, with some minor changes, the law could be very effective for Concord. If you look at the Fair Housing Report that we had, it's very clear that, you know, Concord, by and large, looks financially like the other towns, except for the top tier. That there's a significant number of people with very high incomes. But actually, there's also quite a few people within all the other income tiers, very much like the other towns. And so if there was a way for homeowners to exempt part of their value that would tend to tilt the tax burden a little bit, I think that that would actually improve tax fairness. The problem is that the provisions of the law are really assuming that they're either absentee landlords that need to be charged more, or absentee owners. You know, and so we are not in that circumstance. And what we'd really, I think what would work for us is if we could somehow throw the apartment buildings and empty land and all in with the same pool as with the businesses. This is commercial, basically, because it is effectively commercial. And that they would not be affected by this and that it would only be within the owner-occupied residential that this stratification, to the extent it would be done, would happen. And I think that that would be a very effective policy for Concord, but it's not the law. And, you know, we've seen already how difficult it is to make any changes in the law based upon our interests. And until there was such a different provision added to this that would deal with towns like us that have a lot of income stratification, it doesn't seem applicable to me. And so that's why I would, at this point, suggest really no further action other than to appreciation and also just showing the public the effects of this study.
Thank you, Matt Wilson. Any other comments from board members? From the town manager?
Yeah, I was just going to say, saying what Matt said a little differently. There are 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, and all or nearly all are represented by people who want to do the best they can for their constituents, especially on tax relief. And if this only works for 15 communities, I think that, that's the only, that is, as Lain pointed out, the kind of political, if you will, data point about the flaws in the current exemption law and why it doesn't really work for most towns, including Concord.
Any other comments for our presenters? Well, you did such an effective job. You've totally shut down the questions and comments. But we thank you very much because I think, as Matt has said, an important part of this process, and even if we have to do it every so many years to reevaluate the current law, is to see of its currency and applicability to our town. And clearly, I think we're not feeling it, it is not. So thank you for your presentation.
My pleasure. It's always fun to dig deep into some issue and take a look. So our pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attention today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll keep seeking other ways.
Exactly.
Tax fairness committee. That's, not us. Tax fairness committee. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Our next topic is the West Metro Home Consortium Fair Housing Plan. I think Matt already offered one segue into this next topic. And certainly, there was some startling facts and figures in in that report. So Marsha, before you start, if I could just ask you what you're looking for from the select board this evening before you make your presentation, just so we could be listening with the right mindset. You're on mute.
The intention was to bring this report to your attention to so that you would be aware of the this as a resource for talking about housing, knowing that we're going to be undertaking our housing production plan, probably starting after this summer. And and to just see if there's support for the recommendations that have been made in the report. This was last done in 2013. There was not a lot of outside input into that process. This was a much more robust process. And so basically, just to bring it to your attention, because I know that there have been some comments made by different select board members at various meetings I've attended regarding the social unrest that we've experienced over the past year and the issue of racial equity. And so this is one of the steps that Concord can take as a participant in the home consortium to begin to address concerns about racial equity.
Thank you.
So I don't have a major report to to share with you, other than the document itself. The home West Met, excuse me, the Metro West Home Consortium is made up of 13 different communities, and we are contiguous communities. Concord became a member of the consortium back in 2010 when they opened the membership to us. And we receive HUD funding through federal funding through the home through HUD. And it's it's not a lot. It's $25,000 per almost per community. But we pool our resources. So as each community identifies projects to be done, they are eligible to seek these additional funds for projects in their communities. Peter Bulkley, through the Concord Housing Authority, has received funds through the consortium. And the Junction Village, now Christopher Heights, project have also received funds through the home consortium. This report specifically is the analysis of impediments to affirmative fair housing. And it provides some background information as to the legal requirements for fair housing, describes what fair housing is, provides a discussion of who lives in our area in this West Metro Consortium, the quality of housing and the affordability and the choices that people have available to them. And then looks at each community's impediments to affordable or fair housing choice. And so that we they've we've hired outside consultants, Judy Barrett and Goldson Associates to to look at this, to provide information, gather information. They've they've worked on this for the past two years and looked at the general market trends, the our policies, procedures, zoning, access to housing opportunities, and what needs to happen to remove those barriers to afford to fair housing? And where are the needs greatest? And then the recommendations, I think, are the most realistic recommendations. We had the all of the advisory committee participated in a series of of conversations to make sure that what we had we are recommending for the consortium to undertake are realistic action items that will have measurable goals that we could all benefit from. So and and that's why I've asked to have this before you at this time. There are two weeks left of the review period before it will be considered officially adopted. And so if there were questions or specific items that you wanted to raise as questions, this is your opportunity.
Terry.
I've I've read through a lot of the report, and it's very comprehensive and very informative. Thanks to everybody who worked on it. And my suggestion is very minor. I don't know what page it's on in the report. It's page 88 in our packet tonight. And it's labeled West Metro Home Consortium Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice 2020 through 2025. And Concord is on the top of the page. It lists the municipal boards, councils, committees, commissions, and trusts. And I just think we have to update that section a little where it says Board of Selectmen should be select board. And we want to add our new Affordable Trust Committee because it's going to go through 2025. So it's a very minor thing that I noticed.
So I think you're referring to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yes.
Which is what the correct name will be, I guess.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that addition.
So, you know, I happened to notice that 86% of the people interviewed who are in public housing said that they had been discriminated in the process. And so the report outlines a couple, a number of steps to try to educate renters in the respective towns. So could you just in this, if you can, hopefully, this is an unfair request, highlight what's what some of those processes might be in terms of how to educate our landlords?
Well, working with the Regional Housing Services Office, they provide educational opportunities for many of the companies that run our larger rental projects and also offer opportunities for the the real estate agents, the real estate companies in in the various communities. By working together as the consortium, we design these different packages for the groups and offer it, making it available. So that we do outreach with letters. We put together programs. And it's this is done either through the consortium itself or working with the Regional Housing Services Office. There's a really good relationship. Our RHSO represents five of the 13 communities. That's Concord, Bedford, Lexington, and Sudbury and Wayland. So five of the communities are represented by the RHSO. They're an active participant in the consortium itself. Other things that we do, we're we're planning to do is reach out to the, let me see, the Central Transportation Plannings. Nope, it's another group. The I'm trying to get all my letters mixed up. It is the it's a collaborative of planning boards and planning planning opportunities and working with them to present a program in the spring to all communities that might have to deal with this kind of issue. So that was one of the ideas in the recommendations made.
So I applaud the report for offering a whole variety of strategies to get to begin to tackle the issue of capacity and the availability of of housing. And certainly, one of the ideas was looking at zoning. And I know that the town has also actively tried to look at some zoning laws, including two family dwellings, et cetera. One of the things, and this is not just a comment on this report, but many of the the housing reports, when they uncover all this valuable information for the public, report the SHI numbers as we must, according to how they are to be reported legally, and then just give one or two sentences to say, but yes, in fact, this number does not really represent the number of affordable housing units. And I guess I would just make, if there is any opportunity for any kind of revision, to attribute more than just one sentence to that particular fact. Because often, some of the confusion for our own public is that when they see the SHI number, don't realize that sometimes less than, you know, more or less half of that number is really the units that might even be approachably affordable. And so it's 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 an education measure for the public, really.
There is some discussion of that in the in the document about the 25% threshold. And yeah.
Yeah, but the the qualification about how many are actually affordable seem to be limited.
I mean, to like provide the actual number, you think.
Yeah, and and highlight it maybe more than once. Now, Matt.
Yeah, so I was really also pleased to see inclusionary zoning and the two family initiatives that we've been working on in Concord represented as recommendations here. However, I think on page 36 of the report, they talk about allowing two family dwellings at a minimum in all residential districts, which I it seemed struck me as the kind of recommendation that would be appropriate for a more urban community. But in our community, the idea of having multi-family dwellings in Residence Double A it just encourages sprawl. And so I just don't I don't understand why we would recommend that for the less urban community. So I don't know if there's some way to qualify the statement, but, you know, it's something worth considering. The other thing I'd mentioned while I have the floor is just there were some astonishing statistics in in the paper. So one example for Concord is that, you know, we have, other than Bedford, the largest percentage of veterans in town, and yet they also have the lowest median income among the the towns that were selected. So I think that that's a population that we really should think about. And then another statistic was just the the income by race in town is opposite of anything you've ever seen, you know, in that in, you know, that those other racial backgrounds have an area of median a median income that's higher than than white residents, which is, I think, perhaps just a reflection of some of the way that our society has evolved here. But and also about how few minorities we have in town ultimately. So it it is still nonetheless very interesting to pour over the different statistics that are provided.
So picking up on that last statement that Matt made in terms of the median income for various ethnic groups. In fact, it is likely that it has to do with the property values and people who are able to access housing in Concord. But the the introductory comment or summary comment or both to that chart did not compute with the information that was on that chart. And so that should be looked at again.
Okay, thank you.
You you mean about the prison population or?
No, about what you were just talking about in terms of no, no, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Overall, it's an impressive report and hope that people have an opportunity to, you know, the segments will be pulled out in a way that's digestible by the general public, who are not going to wade through it.
It's currently not posted on the Planning Division's webpage, but we will be adding it this week. So it will be accessible to the community. Right now, they can find it through your web site, the information presented to you this evening.
Great. And, you know, being able to pull out segments, you know, a factoid or something that went on news and notices from periodically could be very helpful, sort of just educating the public.
Thank you. That's a great idea.
Jane.
I fully agree. In fact, I was going to suggest that we with this report and any of the other reports that different town departments list for the first time, that we always send out a news and notice reminding everybody that that's been done so that folks know to look. But I think actually calling out that the information and maybe juxtaposing it with our housing inventory, you know, drawing a number of things out to describe to residents the town they live in.
Yeah, you know, a lot of people follow the Twitter feed, you know, they can.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Well, thanks, Marsha, yet again, for taking your time and all the effort that goes into getting these things accomplished.
You're very welcome. Thanks for this evening. Good night.
Good night. Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is the town manager evaluation. And I'd like to step back and make a few comments regarding the process. You know, at the last meeting, I opened up a discussion to review the town manager's FY 20 first year evaluation process and also to get some further feedback on my summary comments. It was pointed out at the timeline, at the time that we were behind in getting this task completed. And I fully accept the responsibility for that because we are, in fact, about three months behind the time when the data was available to work with. You know, as everyone knows, our last annual town meeting was delayed did not occur till September 13, 2020, due to the pandemic. Shortly thereafter, I was actually shortly before the annual town meeting, I was asked by the then Chair of the Select Board and the Select Board to take the lead on completing this evaluation. I then initiated a process, which included using the standard town manager evaluation form that the town has used previously, as well as I added the dimension of asking the town manager to simultaneously complete his own self assessment of of his first year in office. And also, at that point, signaled to the town manager that he would be need need to be ready to add some goals to the then anticipated FY 21 Select Board goal process, which, in fact, he he did do. We independently all submitted our evaluations to Jeremy, who then compiled them and sent them to me. I was tasked with the responsibility to summarize that data and capture our responses to the first year evaluation. When I opened it up to get some feedback on my draft to date, it was pointed out by some of you, and quite rightly so, that going forward, it would be very productive for the Select Board to again revisit the whole process as a whole and reach some agreement on that process and methodology going forward, which we will do in preparation for the next town manager's evaluation after this one, which will occur sometime after June 21. It was also pointed out to me that it's important it was important to include in the FY 20 evaluation a specific Select Board identified goals for the town manager. Again, that was appropriate and based on our standard Select Board evaluation form. At this point, I am concerned about getting this task done, which was delegated to me, not only for the sake of the town manager having a completed evaluation of his first year, but as importantly for us as a Select Board to have the first year of town evaluation as a basis for moving forward at the end of the year, end of this now FY 21 year to evaluate the town manager. So I would hope that tonight that you authorize the Chair to finalize the report and to then subsequently and to then submit it to the town manager and then to immediately there. thereafter, make it available to the public. So that's my comments on the Town Manager's Evaluation and where we are. So what I would like to do, entertain some further comment from the Select Board members, but I would like to move to reconfirmation, I guess I will say, of letting me finish the task that was given to me in terms of finalizing this report and submitting it to the Select, to the Town Manager, and then subsequently, relatively quickly after that, submitting it to the public, making it available to the public. Susan?
I would support that. I know that there was a document that came through a couple hours before the meeting with some goals that if we were to consider, it wouldn't be able, it would have to be postponed for two weeks because it came in so late. So my feeling would be not to, either not to consider that document or to push the whole thing out by two weeks, which I don't prefer.
And there is an opportunity for all that information to be, again, collectively represented.
I'm not sure what that, what you meant by that, Linda.
Taking all that feedback into account. And again, representing that.
You mean if we postpone, if we put this out?
No, it's part of the process to complete.
Okay.
To complete this.
Well, related to that, Linda, I think, thank you for taking the initiative in putting this all together. And I'm wondering if we, it is important to get closure as soon as possible. I think we all agree with that. And I'm wondering if we authorize you to finalize it. Can you tell us more what you have in mind? Like, have you gotten lots of changes from board members? Is it, are, is it going to be substantially different from what we've seen? Are you intending to incorporate goals into the document?
Definitely intend to incorporate the goals into the document. The feedback received, and I have heard from everyone, is, does not substantially change, but does, in fact, again, you know, it's always the sum of the parts that helps sharpen, I guess I would.
I think that's great. I think that it's very important to feedback from all of us and also to include goals so that a year from now, or whenever the next eval is, we have some way to measure what is happening. So I would, I'm one of the ones who was definitely in favor of including the goals.
I think, I think, yes. It certainly is consistent with the form that we used to evaluate the Town Manager.
Yeah, I think the goals are critical to the process. So that's where I was confused.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You would have time to collect all and then go through the process as you described, then I don't, I don't have any objections. I do think that it's appropriate to acknowledge that the evaluation process is both informative for the Town Manager and for the Select Board.
Absolutely.
It leads to financial decisions. And so, you know, we need to move through the whole process.
Okay, any other comments? All right. So, this is, yeah, this is.
Absolutely, it's the Select Boards, but this is a procedural matter. It's not, it doesn't have to do anything, it has nothing to do with the Town Manager. I, since this is a public discussion, we really do need to see whatever forms were so far distributed. And whatever, you know, whatever people write to you directly, there is no conflict with the open meeting law. But when you distribute something to the people, there is. And that, I believe that happened last time. This time, you know, with them assigning you to do something on behalf of the Board, that's perfectly fine. But whatever document that you have already circulated, you have already discussed, I mean, this is a public meeting, otherwise it would be an executive session. The public needs to see whatever document has been already circulated among the Select Board with regards to this. I have, I have no comments to make about the Town Manager one way or the other. It has nothing to do with that. This is just about the process.
All right, Tanya, thank you for your comments. And Tanya, sorry, your name and address again, please.
62 Prescott Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the sake of the person taking the minutes, thank you. Okay. So I would like to proceed, complete this task, submit it to the Town Manager, and then shortly thereafter, we will, this will be presented to the public, made public, available to the public.
Would you like a motion to that effect?
I would like, yes, I would.
Okay, I move to authorize the Chair to compile the final version of the Town Manager's Evaluation, including goals, and submit it to the Town Manager and shortly thereafter to the public.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hachkis?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. All right, thank you. And the next item on the agenda is committee nominations.
The Select Board nominates Kate Yoder of 79 Deergrass Lane and Margaret Kimball of 21 Winthrop Street to the West Concord Cultural District Committee for terms to expire on April 30th, 2023.
And these are reappointments, is there a second? Second?
I just wanted to make two comments. First of all, as one of the nominees is my wife, I wouldn't be voting, but the other is that her name was misspelled. It's Margot, M-A-R-G-O-T, Kimball. So the nomination should reflect that. I've tried twice with Jeremy to get that changed, but somehow it didn't happen.
With our apologies, but this is a case where resident expertise and knowledge, firsthand knowledge is helpful, thank you.
So do we need a motion for nominations? I thought that was just.
Actually, there wouldn't be, I guess.
Yeah, just to, the announcement is fine, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Committee liaisons and reports. Do we have any this week, Terry?
Yes, just in case I lose power, which sometimes happens if it's a long meeting. So I'll be, I'll be brief. There are vacancies on, there's a one vacancy on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee still, and another vacancy on the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee. So we're looking for citizens to step up on those two. I attended a League of Women Voters first Friday, where Alan Cathcart presented an excellent presentation on wastewater. It's very well-attended, excellent questions. The Capital Planning Task Force continues to meet and integrate the comments we heard at the public forum and get ready to present a final report to the Select Board. We are still looking for comments from the public at cptf@concordma.gov. Tomorrow morning, the Library Corporation will present a sustainability plan at 10:00 a.m. via Zoom. And we didn't do liaison reports last week, so the week before, I attended the CMLP Budget Presentation. CMLP does their budget from January through January, Stephen was there. It was a very comprehensive budget presentation. I'll just say a couple of comments. There was projected to be a net profit of 4.1% in 2021, but they had lost money in 2019 and 2020. And one exciting thing is that they're planning to buy the first hybrid bucket truck to the town. So that's exciting. That's it.
I didn't even know they existed. That's cool.
Neither.
All right, Susan?
I have a pretty short list. The Planning Department had a brief meeting last Thursday morning just to approve, just for, to discuss and approve an A and R, which is approval not required, for parcel on Pittsburgh Turnpike. The Cemetery Committee met on the 6th and reviewed their accomplishments for the year. They, they made headway on all of their goals and then continued the discussion about goals that are upcoming. They also had some discussion about bicycle use and signage, and it was particularly about signage from trails that are coming off of the reformatory branch that go into the cemetery property. And discuss specific locations for the Mauser Williams. The noncommittee meeting I attended was a Concord Business Partnership, which, there was a brief presentation by Gary Kleiman on the NMI Starment reuse, which they'll be presenting to us, I assume, in the near future. It also was announced that Concord Together, which, the grant fund that's being administered through the Community Chest, received a $50,000 year-end anonymous donation. So the small businesses, Concord businesses, who have not yet applied for grants from that organization are encouraged to do so, with that healthy influx of funds. Most of the meeting was taken, was devoted to Chief O'Connor and Chief Judge talking about various issues as a result of coronavirus, including mental health and, and the steps that they took that have helped protect all of us. And Chief Judge mentioned that we were, he was, we were one of the first communities to segregate, we segregated the two forces at each fire station. Usually, there's a lot of back and forth and firefighters serving at one or both. But they made a decision early on to, to not do that, to keep the force segregated in that regard. And, and he felt it, it went quite a long way to reducing the spread within that, within the department. And that's it.
Okay, Jane? Thank you, Susan. Jane?
I also have a quick list. But I attended the NRC and the, and the Historic Districts Commission meetings last week. And the, with the NRC, it was, there were quite a few things continued to, into February, most notably, the, one of the lots on Kuka Road, and a discussion, continuing discussion of old Bedford Road, a property on Old Bedford Road. The Middlesex School was heard, but also continued as they continue, as they are ongoing, they have an ongoing discussion about the, their proposal for two new turf fields, which would have but Lowell Road. It seems that they have taken some of the items that were discussed previously under advisement, not clear as to how that, how they will study it, but they are clearly looking at the options, their options through the lens of input, which is always great. Then, in terms of other new applications that were heard, there was an interesting application on Range Road, as well as one on, several on Upland Road. Probably the most interesting from a, from a West Concord perspective, was a discussion over 48 Upland Road, which is on, which is in the corner. And it was a request to extend the, their DEP file number 1371102 for yet another three year period. This, this DEP file number has been ongoing since 2011 without advancement. And so there was an interesting discussion about the goals of putting a, the goals of having started a process and not, and just continuously delaying it. So at this point, they were given one year with a lot of very specific requests on information to come back to the Select Board, I mean, to the, to the NRC. It's a property that many of us who live in West Concord have walked by and wondered about, and I think that there are family members involved, as usually are. In terms of the HTC, it was perhaps the fastest Historic Districts Commission meeting ever, with a discussion about the Concord Museum's choice of color for their, for their mailbox. And you'll all be happy to know that that was approved without any, any, any prolonged objections or discussion. And in fact, the, the ability to name their own road, their own way, was also referred to them. However, there was a lengthy conversation continuing about the treatment of Jenny Dugan as a Historic District and what, how they are framing their role with the, with the area. And for those who are unfamiliar with the Historic District Commission, it is a very interesting conversation about the nuances between the role of a Historic District in terms of promoting or simply advising on areas that are interested in expanding, changing, or applying for Historic Districts. And I would advise anybody with curiosity to that point, to look, look online at the, at the Zoom meeting. I also advise anybody interested in the historic nature or the, or the architectural primance of deck homes to take a quick drive down to Jenny Dugan. It has some really interesting architectural options. So with that, that's enough. Those are my reports.
Thanks, Jane. Matt?
So I had a half dozen meetings last week, but I'll just focus on four of them for the sake of time. The first is Community Preservation Committee. The first is Community Preservation Committee. They reviewed additional information from a couple applicants and re-walked through all of the funding recommendations and took the $33,000 that had not been previously allocated and added it into the CHDC's buy-down fund request. And so that now stands at $233,000, more or less. And so it looks like now all the funding recommendations have been pretty much finalized, and it's really all but for the voting, which will happen at the next meeting. The next is the Middle School Building Committee. A number of changes there. Tim Holt resigned as co-chair of the committee, and now the former vice chair, Pat Nelson, has agreed to fill the co-chair slot. And also, as a result of further tuning, the timeline of the feasibility study has now been pushed back at least a month from the end of March to the end of April. So the initial estimate of how long it would take, once they worked through all the subcommittee meetings and other things that were required, extended the date. So, and in fact, the vote on that will not happen until probably mid-May. So there was, you know, relative to the 2025 date that was discussed last time, some slack in the schedule, so I don't think that, you know, things are in any jeopardy, but it is taking a little bit longer to get off the ground here at the feasibility level. The Housing Authority met, and they approved the pilot agreement, so the payment in lieu of taxes, that they've now finalized. And meanwhile, the director search goes on, and they have published an ad, or they're publishing an ad, and there'll be a February meeting, an executive session to review applications. Once they have a shortlist, they will move to a public process. And they, we still need people to run for the elected offices that are available for the Housing Authority, so anybody out there that would like to serve, please run. And then they also will weigh in on the NMI StarMet report that I'll talk about in a minute, and the Thorough Depot zoning project that's undergoing, you know, going on within the planning board. And, you know, relative to the applicability of affordable housing. Then finally, the NMI StarMet Committee met, and they reviewed visuals that were produced by the Town Communications Director, Aaron Stevens. So people like those changes. That will now allow us to create, the committee to create a revised draft report that we think by the end of this week or so should be distributed to town boards and committees. So we will have something on the select board to review, and I definitely think we should make time to review that in depth. So there we are.
Thank you, Matt. I will just add, in lieu of my committee liaison report, that the most recent economic stimulus bill that was approved by the governor includes some language in there that expands housing choice options, and probably some guidance for municipal zoning. So I've yet to have the chance to read that, but I think we should all be aware of that. Okay, it's now time for public comment. Okay, see no new public comment. I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Do a second? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for all your input this evening. Very helpful. Thank you.